All right, well, good morning. I want to welcome everyone to Commissioner's Court. Before we get started, we lead with our invocation and our pledges. Mr. Givens, if you would, please lead us in the invocation today and Commissioner McCam, if you wouldn't, pledges.
Heavenly Father, we come now in the name of Jesus, giving you thanks and praise that you blessed us each and everyone to be able to be here today. As we come before you this morning, we know that we are in need of you. This is being sexual awareness. Lord, help in that area by moving in the hearts of men and women to make a mighty change in that area of our lives. Lift up the sheriff and his department and all of law enforcement officers that are present and all over this land to help enforce the law in ways that your mission is accomplished. Continue to pray for the judge, the commissioners, and for all that are present today, that your will be done in our lives. In Jesus' name, I pray and ask your spirit to move in a mighty way to accomplish this purpose. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to lead Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Really, Givens, thank you, sir. All right, well, the time is 9:03. We do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting to order. Are there any citizens' comments?
No, sir.
Okay. Item one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioner's Court on April the 4th, 2023. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments to the meetings, to the minutes?
Hearing none, Judge. I move we approve the minutes of the Commissioner's Court for April 4th, 2023, as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and seconded by Commissioner Spidey to approve the minutes from the Commissioner's Court meeting held on April the 4th, 2023, as they are presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item number two is consider and take action to proclaim April of 2023 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And this morning, we have our district attorney along with a great supporting crowd to come forward and read the proclamation and speak to us a little bit about it.
Good morning, Court, Commissioners. Thank you for having us today. It's so important and so exciting what we're doing in Henderson County for sexual assault of adults. Our SART team, which is our Sexual Assault Response Team, something that's new, where we meet quarterly to talk about services that we can provide for adult survivors of sexual assault. We have such a great team that's here and representing today, along with the sheriff. We've got Clint Davis here as well, so we are very excited about the things that we're doing here. So proclamation for 2023 Sexual Assault Awareness Month, whereas April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month and calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in Henderson County. And whereas every day, women, men, and children across Texas suffer the pain and trauma of sexual assault upon survivors in our Henderson County communities. And whereas this crime occurs far too frequently, goes unreported far too often, and leaves long-lasting physical and emotional scars. And whereas during National Sexual Assault Awareness Month, we recommit ourselves to lifting the veil of secrecy and shame surrounding sexual violence, expanding support for victims, and strengthening our response. And whereas sexual violence affects individuals of all ages, backgrounds, and circumstances. And whereas, as a community, we share the responsibility for protecting each other from sexual assault, supporting victims when it does occur, and bringing perpetrators to justice. And whereas, at every level, we must work to provide necessary resources to victims of every circumstance, including medical attention, mental health services, relocations and housing assistance, and advocacy during the criminal justice process. And whereas Henderson County communities can come together to increase awareness about sexual violence, decrease its frequency, hold offenders accountable, support victims, and heal lives. And now therefore be it resolved that the Henderson County Commissioner's Court joins other anti-sexual violence advocates and support services programs in the belief that all community members must be part of the solution to end sexual violence and proclaim April 2023 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, dated this 11th day of April 2023.
Court, questions or comments?
I'd like to thank all of you that are involved in this, even if it helps one person, that's a win. And I just wanted to say thank you.
You know, I think it's one of those things that growing, all of us in this room, growing up, never thought that we'd have to have a day to where we'd have to have an awareness for things like this in the way our world has. But it's again, one of those times that the people that are, see this on a day-to-day basis or on a weekly basis, hourly basis, I just have to say our hats are off to y'all and the ones that prosecute these people. So thank you for what you do for Henderson County.
Just like to say thank you for everybody that worked for these people that are involved in sexual assault. I know it goes hand in hand with what we did last week with child abuse, but it's terrible that we have to have these kind of days, but it's necessary to keep it in, out in the public and to remind everybody that it does happen.
I'd just like to thank you personally, the DA, for stepping up and handling, pushing these cases and getting them taken care of and the task force that y'all created, Crimes Against Children and the Help Center. Like, y'all do a great job on awareness and stuff with this situation. Thank you.
I think Mr. Givens put it best in the fact of that it's the darkness of the human heart, period and end of story. The efforts of our nonprofits, the efforts of our individuals that are here that deal with it every day. It is a sad reality that we have that sin and that darkness in the world, and the only way to keep is shining a light on it. And what y'all have done through the creation of the SART team, through the creation of the task force, the endless efforts of the individuals in the back, back there, and we're going, we really, when this is through, would like to have everyone come up and get a picture taken on this proclamation, but thank you all very much.
Thank you. If I may, Your Honor, we have such an amazing team with our nonprofits, and that's something that you mentioned. We have Della in the back, we have our Help Center. All of us work very well together to make sure that they receive the services they need regardless of the outcome of prosecution. So without all of the people that are in here today, we would not be successful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Given that entertaining motion.
I'll make the motion to proclaim April 2023 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and seconded by Commissioner Spidey to proclaim 2023 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. If y'all would, please come forward and let's get a quick picture for the paper.
Actually, Ginger.
Ginger, there we go. Y'all gonna have to pull in tight. Y'all gonna have to pull in.
Tighten up.
Tighten up.
One, two, three.
All right. Thank y'all very much. No, thank y'all. You made the proclamation so that she'll, she'll get an engine so we can get a copy of it. Ginger? If you would. We'll move to item three now, which is consider and take action to reappoint Mark Hannan and Jody Vincic, Vincic, sorry, Vincic, to the Henderson County 9111 Communication District Board of Managers for a two-year term beginning May the 1st of 2023. Court, we make these appointments every few years. It is time for the reappointment of our current members. They have expressed a willingness to continue to serve, and as you can tell from the backup from the executive director, Mark Brown, is asking for their reappointment. Questions or comments?
Looks like they still have a vacant spot down the bottom.
Yeah, and that is an industry representative. They're working to get that filled. Any other discussion? Entertaining motion?
So moved to approve.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the reappointment of, let me sit down and time him again. Sorry, Mark Hannan and Jody Vincic to the Henderson County 9111 Communication District Board of Managers for a two-year term beginning May the 1st of 2023. Any further comments? All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item four is consider and take action on a request for a refund of overpayment of taxes from Henderson County Tax Assessor Collector. Good morning.
Good morning. I have nine refund checks totaling $52,078.04.
Questions from the court? Hearing none there?
Oh. I'd like to say most all these are from the appraisal review board, and I just want to let it be known that there's some of them that I don't really agree with on here on evaluations, but there's not much that we can do about it. They've, the board's approved it.
Are they, is it value disagreement or category disagreement?
Yeah, I think it's a value. Let me find the one. Well, there's a couple of them on here, but let me, there's several of them, so let me go down to here and find the one that... Well, actually, it's not giving the values on, on the, on our copy here, the duplicate receipt, but I looked them up and seemed like, yeah, here it is. One of them for this tax advisor group says taxable value of $193,840, and it was reduced down to $87,428, and this location is Hibbett Sports.
Hibbett Sports, an actual business location?
More than $100,000 in value, in taxable value of the property, $87,428 is what it decreased to from $193,840.
That is one of the things that we've seen more and more in the appraisal rules, each legislative session, of them leaning more and more leniency on businesses and shifting more of the burden on the individual private ownership of a home. You know, one time it was pretty even, but as a way to attract business, that was what they started doing, was reducing the appraisal values or the appraisal formulas to where a business is taxed at what would be considered a lesser rate than what our own homes are. So that's probably why the ARB had to go along with it.
I'm sure everybody in this room would like to build a building of that size for, and be valued and build it for $87,000 nowadays.
Yeah. Yeah, it's an example of what's been happening and something we've argued about for years. You're exactly right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, entertaining motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and seconded by Commissioner Spidey to approve the request for refund of overpayment of taxes from the Henderson County Tax Assessor Collector as presented. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Item passes four to one. Thank you. Item number five, consider and take action on request from the district attorney's office to amend the DA seizure fund budget. Just to kind of set the stage a little bit, court, you'll remember that there are seizure funds held by a couple of the departments, and the court is only involved with those funds when we're discussing salary or compensation, so.
Correct. Thank you. What we're looking for here is to amend and use about $5,000 per year in additional salary for appellate purposes. And to give you an idea about why that's necessary, in 2022, we had 1,848 cases filed in the DA's office. We had 1,138 cases go through grand jury, and that was in 2022. For 2023, as of today, we've had 478 cases filed in our office and 216 cases presented to the grand jury. And another aspect, way to look at that, is in January, we had 327 cases run through the 392nd District Court. And some of these cases are repeat cases that have hearings that are going, you know, month to month. February, we had 268 cases. March, we had 219 cases, and for April, we have 218 cases scheduled. So that tells you that it's very busy over in the district attorney's office. We do not have an appellate prosecutor. Some counties do. I know that Smith County has three appellate prosecutors. The last time I checked, Gregg County had two. What an appeal is, after everything is done, we have a jury trial and that's complete, there is the right to appeal. And an appeal is something that could take sometimes 40 hours a week, three weeks at a time, getting ready, where you're working through the entire record, you're responding to the appeal in writing that a defendant has written or a defense attorney has written. Some cases, even if there's a plea bargain or somebody has been sentenced and all their appeals are exhausted, they have something that are called RITS that are filed that we have to respond to. Many times, we argue them in court, and it's something that is very labor and time intensive. That's something that we run into issues with when we're in court, we're preparing for trial, and suddenly we're having to go back and write these long appeals. And so what we're asking the court to do is allow us this, what we think is a temporary solution, to get us through some very time-consuming times that we have a lot of court going on, where we can use Beth New from the county attorney's office or Rebecca Ray from the county attorney's office after hours and on weekends to write some of our appeals when we need them. And we would use our seizure funds so we wouldn't have to use county money to do so. But in using those, I think it's a testament to our good relationships with the county attorney's office, that they're willing to do this and put in those extra hours and write those appeals. I did talk to some other attorneys that are outside the county on what they would be charging if we wanted to contract with them to do appeals, and the number I got was $6,000 per appeal, which is something that really our seizure fund can't handle. Both Rebecca and Beth have agreed that they would do $1,500 per appeal, and so that's something that we're looking to use as a temporary solution from our seizure fund as needed during this next bit, and we're excited and glad that they're willing to step in and help.
Questions, Court?
Well, you said this be temporary. What is it long-term fix?
Long-term, I imagine eventually that we'll have to come back and ask for an attorney. I think that that is a ways away, but I'm hoping that this will get us through the next couple of years.
Is part of this due to the bottleneck that occurred as a result of COVID and thing with as much as that's having to be run through the courts now?
I think that may have something to do with it. I think we are just busier than we have ever been. There are more investigations that are happening. To give you an example of our Crimes Against Children Task Force, the amount of cases that they are filing with our office than we are turning around and prosecuting, the numbers are just very large. There are six prosecutors and myself in our office, and it is just, it is very busy. And more and more defendants are writing these pro se RITS, and that takes time. We want to make sure that we, we don't get something overturned that was done many years before. We've argued cases that are 10 years old, not very long ago, so it has just been very, very busy.
Now, one thing that may not be widely understood is that our judicial process is supported by the number of attorneys that we have in the county, be it on the criminal side or the civil side. And there's a finite amount of those to be available. And in other instances, like in my court, there's instances where I will appoint individuals to act as an addendum, and because what we're getting in is compensation for work. It's not additional salary that we're talking about here. It's actual kind of contract labor for an additional portion, which is outside of their normal duties. And given what has been put here for us today, it sounds like we need it.
It would be a great help to us in the DA's office. The last thing I want to do is take one of my attorneys out of court for three weeks and keep them out of commission while they're writing an appeal. You know, we need them prosecuting the people that we've got right in front of us right now. And so I do know that we will continue. This amount that we're talking about will not get us through every appeal and writ that we have, but it will help in the situations where we need assistance.
This will be, will this be run through payroll or will be?
Has to be.
It has to be run through payroll. Any other thoughts, comments, questions? So we can, due to the workload, we'll be visiting about this again come summertime, I'm sure.
I actually, I really hope that this will get us through several years. The Commissioner's Court has been really grateful to, we're very grateful that y'all have been so great to us and allowing us to fill those positions that we've needed as we've had more victims come through our office. We are hopeful this will get us through a while. So that is my, my goal, is that this gets us through a while.
There's no further questions or comments, Court? Entertaining motion?
So moved to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, Richardson, to approve the amendment to the DA, to the district attorney's seizure fund, allowing for the payment of...
So $5,000 is what we're asking for to be authorized to use out of seizure for salaries at $1,500 per appeal?
To amend the budget for $5,000 for appeals.
Correct.
Mary Margaret, did you get all that? Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item six, consider and take action to open and record responses to the 2023 depository and subdepository bid for the period of 2023 through 2025. Mr. Bynum?
Yes, sir. As y'all know, the court would go out for a bid for a depository and subdepository bid either over four years or over two. Our last depository bid was a four-year bid. Next time, we're going out for a two-year bid with an option to move to the board. We decided that this is the one we're going to have. So today, what we need to do is I need to record the bids that have been turned in, which they were due as of yesterday at 4:00 p.m. in the county judge's office. So this is what I have, and so we've got a bid, a depository bid from First State Bank that was turned in April the 6th at 10:33. I want to pull all this out, because I don't want it to go everywhere, but it's a little bit to get it out. But in time, sure.
Why are you doing that? Well, we'll end up, there'll be an evaluation of those that brought back to us at a later date for approval or for selection, and I believe the deadline is May 31st?
May 31st. So what I will do is I will take these bids, I'll put them on spreadsheet for the board, and this late, we'll also be present, and we can go through these and evaluate those. We'll do that soon, presidential, and I like this very quick because I want it in bank. So I also have a depository bid from Simmons Bank that was received on April the 10th And I have a subdepository bid from Simmons Bank as well that was received on April the So that's all I have. So that's all I have. That's all that's actually turned in to your office at that time. So again, we'll go through these. I'll be calling makeup workers to get set up and go from there.
Okay. Now, we have two depository and one subdepository.
Yes, sir.
Any questions concerning this process or moving forward? All right. Well, hearing none, can we have a motion for the approval of the recording?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the recording of the 2023 depository and subdepository bids for the period of 2023 through 2025. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
I look forward to it.
Yes, thank you, Court.
Item seven, consider and take action to transfer a 2014 Chevy Tahoe, unit number C14-28, from the sheriff's office to precinct one commissioner's office.
Yes, Court. This is just basically our standard transfer from the sheriff's office to Commissioner Spivey's office. We do have one Tahoe left that came off last year, came off the line and is available. And she's showed interest in getting it over there for the precinct. So that's what we're asking the court to do.
Gray or what?
I do not know.
Do not know?
I think it's gray.
Gray. That's going to be getting toward the end of those gray ones.
Yes, sir.
Now, that's a good, that was a good set of vehicles. Any other question?
I have a pickup, but I have a 2011 pickup, but I'm going to let it go to my fleet because I have a couple of trucks that are about to die.
Well, that's one thing about road and bridge. We can gain the more years of service out of them, so.
And I really appreciate you letting me take that over. Thank you.
Yeah, that's something that doesn't get recognized enough, I think, is the, once the useful life, how the sheriff's department's done, how the sheriff's department's been willing to assist other departments in these vehicles. And we do appreciate that.
And when they go to the auction, you know, the Tahos that have vinyl floors and vinyl seats are not, not too many people want to bid and get too much money for them anyway.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to transfer the Chevy Tahoe from the sheriff's office to precinct one.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Thule to approve the transfer of the 2014 Tahoe from the sheriff's office to precinct one commissioner's office. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Thank you, Sheriff. Item eight, receive financial reports, and we do have several of those today. These are the combined JP County and District Report. They will be available for anyone wishing to view them after court. Item number nine, consider and take action on payroll, distributions, and accounts cash sheets, which we have none. Item 10 is consider and take action on submitted contracts, and we have none. Item 11 is consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits.
Precinct one, precinct two.
All right, then, we'll start precinct one.
Yes, Court. There's a lot of these going to be passing through for a while now. I've gotten several for next week already. It's for Spectrum, it's going and putting the fiber optics in the, I guess, the extra mall we've been talking about to the homes. This one will be on County Road 1099 and 1104. It's open trench and install, two-inch HDP E-conduit and fiber optic cable. They'll be going 48 inches in depth for these installs.
Did you say this is an open trench cutting the road?
Not the road. It's just beside the road.
Okay.
It's just in the right-of-way. It did say they were going to be boring under a few driveways, but not cutting.
Questions for the commissioner? Well, one thing about it, we will be seeing a lot of spectrum communications with the rollout of the ARDOF funding for broadband internet, again.
Yes, sir. I have several for next week as well.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the proposed utility line agreement for Spectrum to install fiber connections within the right-of-way on County Road 1099 and County Road 1104, located in precinct one, with the commissioner's authorization to sign.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Thule to approve the right-of-way agreement with Spectrum Communications for the installation of fiber optics along County Road 1104 and 1099 with the commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Item passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
We'll start with the East Cedar Creek, 2-inch water main down the side of Inca Drive. East Cedar Creek is, I think they had a line collapse, but it's 850 feet of two-inch PVC down Chautauqua to get to Inca.
Questions for the commissioner? Entertain a motion.
Hearing none, Judge. I move we approve the utility line activity for East Cedar Creek Freshwater Service District for a two-inch water main down Inca Drive, 850 feet, with the commissioner's authorization to sign.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Thule and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the right-of-way agreement with East Cedar Creek Freshwater Supply District to install a two-inch water line main on Inca Drive, located in precinct two, with the commissioner's authorization to sign. All those in favor? Item passes unanimously. Commissioner?
The next one is, as Commissioner Spivey said, Spectrum Gulf Coast that's installing fiber optic. I have spoke to this, this lady, her name is Jessie Hatley. And Spectrum Gulf Coast, they say is not, there's contractors that's going to be working in for them. And so what I told her is, is these contractors need to, in precinct two, to install this fiber optic on the backside of the bar ditch and stay out, if they can. But most of this that you're going to be seeing, this is one of 32 that's going to happen in precinct two. So these will be coming to you weekly. But most of mine right now are all overhead. As you can see in the backup, all the green is aerial. And then you'll see some maybe next week or the week after that will be red where they are boring and trenching on the side of the road. This one is on County Road 3901, located in precinct two, and all of this will be aerial, aerial work, but they will be using our right-of-way.
Questions for the commissioner?
Hearing none, Judge. I move we approve the utility line activity for Spectrum Gulf Coast LLC to, for installation of fiber optic on County Road 3901, with the commissioner's authorization to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Thule and second by Commissioner McCam to approve the right-of-way agreement with Spectrum Gulf Coast for the installation of fiber optics along County Road 3901, with the commissioner's authorization to sign. And I would like to add that, you know, with this rollout that's happening from several locations, you know, you've got ARDOF, you've got what our ARPA project, which is coming soon, is the COG project. But what I, what I'm smiling about is that to think Meredith Campground will have, you know, high-speed internet is really saying something. You know, for folks who don't know Meredith Campground, small, old location in north central Henderson County that is really saying something when you're talking about rolling out internet. So, anyway, with that, any other comments? All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Commissioner?
I have the same thing from Spectrum Gulf Coast LLC, the installation of fiber optics. Mine are going to be on 39, County Road 3909, 3910, 3911, 3821, 3822, and 3923. And just as a judge, and I believe nearly, I believe all of mine are overhead right now. And like the commissioner said, most of these locations are north 19 and north west 175 and highly rural areas. So we are getting, I believe we are getting that end-of-line service, finally. I mean, it's, it's going to be a little while before they're probably connected, but it is in the works.
Yep. Well, any other, any questions for the commissioner? I would like to add that appreciate both Encore and specifically Trinity Valley for their assistance in these broadband rollouts, because with the pole connections, you know, they're hanging on the utility company's power poles. And there was a lot of work involved to get those hammered out. So without that cooperation, we'd be, wouldn't be experiencing the ease of this. So, any other comment? Commissioner?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the notice of proposed utility line activity on the roads specifically named for Spectrum Gulf Coast LLC.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the right-of-way agreements with Spectrum Gulf Coast for installation of fiber optic in, I'll say them, 3909, 3910, 3911, 3821, 3822, and 3923, with the commissioner's authorization to sign. All those in favor? Item passes unanimously. Item 12 is consider and take action on submitted budget amendments, and we have none. And then item 13 is consider and take action on payment of bills. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, Commissioner, fiscal year 2023, I mean, $185,207.
Commissioner Spivey?
I have no questions, Judge.
I have none, Judge.
Commissioner McCam?
No question.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve fiscal year 2023 bills in the amount of $185,207.61 as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the 23 bills in the amount of $185,207.61 as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item 14 is consider and take action on submitted plats.
Precinct one, precinct two, and I'll be prepared.
Commissioner?
Yes, Judge. This is a Cedar Branch Park, and this gentleman had two, two lots, and lot, his house straddled both lots, and he was wanting to go down to one tax bill. So he has taken lot 97 and lot 98 that he owns and combined it, making for a final plat of lot 97-R.
Questions for the commissioner?
Hearing none, Judge. I move we approve the Cedar Branch Park replat of lots 97 and 98 in block one to report a final plat of lot 97-R for final purchases only.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thule and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the replat Cedar Branch Park, creating final plat of lot 97-R. Got a quick question, David?
Yes, sir.
There's two sets of setback lines. Not that it means anything. You see that? There's a 25 and a 40.
Oh, the 25-foot, I think that that may be a BLA requirement.
Uh huh.
But the 25-foot setback is the normal setback line that was plotted, and you can't have any outbuildings pass or sticking from the front of the road out. But there are carports that stick out in the edge of right-of-way.
Very familiar. I just, this caught me. I had seen two setback lines. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Item passes unanimously. All right. Item 15, open and consider bids, and we have none. And item 16, consider and take action to adjourn.
So move. Second.
Yep.
Fight.
Sorry. Motion made by Commissioner Thule, second by Commissioner McCam to adjourn at 9:43. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Item passes unanimously.